We'll call our meeting to order.
Thank you for joining us and we are very excited. We have so many students in the audience who are going to help instruct the board as well as the administration, enlighten us to what you're doing with the new programming at the middle schools. Roll call please.
Yes, in my very sexy little voice. The board is all here.
Why don't you all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, we have consent. May I get a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to move obsolete equipment and obsolete items off of consent, please.
Okay, we have a motion to remove obsolete equipment and obsolete items out of consent. May I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the amendment to remove obsolete equipment and items from consent, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Oh, thank you. May I get a motion to approve consent as stated with claims payroll and personnel?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next then for action, we have obsolete equipment and obsolete items. May I get a motion to approve obsolete equipment and items?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'm gonna, I guess, open discussion on both with the understanding that obsolete items are mostly technology and that we have, this will be the fourth such disposal of obsolete technology equipment. So I guess my first question, this list has about 434 pieces of furniture and equipment. My first question is, how often does that type of motion come before the board?
Currently, for the last few years, it's, excuse me, it's not come very often. In earlier years when we were expanding so much and either building new schools and more specifically for this question, renovating other schools, we were disposing of lots of old furniture and equipment, excuse me, as we renovated buildings. I don't actually remember the last time. It's probably been three or four years maybe since we've disposed of non-technology type things. Typically what happens Mike is that we, each, the schools will accumulate things that they no longer have need for because we don't have any kind of significant storage facilities. And as they accumulate these and to a point where we're ready to dispose of them, we will, depending on the items, we will send a list of the items, including pictures nowadays, so that all the schools can see what somebody else has that they don't have any need for. So if there's any interest in the items, then they come and look at them and in many cases will take the items and so forth. After that then we look to dispose of them. And so, you know, that's, that's been the process. But to answer your question in terms of timing on equipment, it's very periodic at this point.
I mean, and then I guess my next question would be, I understand that in the past we've had two different charities that we donated those items to. And I did just a little bit of research on them and, I mean, I think net literacy is probably a great use of our technology items. And I would just kind of question how we determine where the furniture and equipment is going to go to. And it would seem to me that in, you know, the current situation, there may be other schools that would be interested in that type of equipment. And if we have not looked at or not talked to an auctioneer about disposing of that, I don't want to make more work, but I imagine that with the internet and that type of thing, that cost for auctions might be, might be less. And obviously I don't know, you know, how old any of these items are, what potential value it has. And I'm not looking to make more work for anybody, but I hate to, in essence, if there is, if there is some sort of cash value that we can get, obviously I'd like to be able to pursue that.
Let me give you a little background, I think that may help. When we were disposing of lots of equipment and mostly furniture frankly, but when we were doing that, we, there's two or three ways to dispose of school property. One is to trade it in, another is to sell it outright and solicit bids basically. And another is to, if it has any value, and another is if you declare it obsolete and having no value, then you can give it away. So in the past, we held auctions and what we would do is we would, we would collect all the, all the equipment and furniture. We had so much of it that we would take it to the high school, put it in the parking lot. Invariably it'd rain and before we had the auction. And then we would, we would hire an auctioneer and the auctioneer was really the least of the cost. The movement of all this stuff was probably, was the largest cost that we incurred. So we would hold an auction and what would happen is, is most of the, many of the items would be sold in, by the lot. And so school furniture for example, maybe teacher desk or maybe student furniture, might be sold 100 at a time. Because you, one at a time, first of all, we might have 2,000 of them and you'd be there for days if you auctioned them off one at a time. And second, even at 100 at a time, you might get 20 or 30 dollars. But what would happen is, is whoever bought those, they really only wanted five or 10 or 15. And so they leave 85 in the parking lot and take the 15 that they wanted. And so a good deal of the items would be abandoned. And so then we had to move them again or bring them to dumpsters and so forth and put them in the trash and then pay for that and pay to have it hauled away. And so thus we eventually moved away from that. We've also tried advertising on various, and more recently, various websites, school websites, thinking that other schools might have need for certain things. And occasionally they will. We've given some of our surrounding school districts different items. For example, when we built the fitness center, we had old weight equipment and so forth that we gave to one of the county schools here in Hamilton County. But what happens with the schools is much like the auction, they're generally not interested in, like this 400 and some items worth of things, they might be interested in 50 of them or 20 of them or 30 of them, but not all of it. And so, so there's, and there's, there's expense associated with that too. We have to, first we have to have it where they can see it. Right now, this stuff is in pods up at the high schools that we've already paid because we had, most of this by the way came out of the high school because we bought some new student furniture and teacher desks this past summer. Keep in mind with 5,000 kids, we, the amount of, we didn't buy very many relative to the number of students, but still several, you know, hundred pieces I think. So, so when we store it temporarily until we can dispose of it, then it's hard for somebody to come and look at it and, you know, we don't have it all laid out where they can, and we don't have a place to lay it out where they can walk through and see what they might want. So, so although sometimes we have done that, depends on the items or if we know of another school that has a particular need, sometimes just interacting with people, we may, we may know about that. Occasionally we'll have other not-for-profits ask if we have anything. But the company that we've, the Food for the Poor that we've used for a number of years, it was the one company that we found that essentially will take just about everything that we have. And what they do by the way, they're, they're, they don't sell this stuff. They, they, they ship it to South America to schools. And for us, that was important because kids are kids and we thought that if we're disposing of it, that would, that would be a good use to, if it could find its way to, for other children to use. And so, but in the end, it comes down to, for us, we've tried all the various ways of disposing of school property and generally for large quantities, essentially giving it away is actually more cost-effective for us than trying to sell it a piece at a time and, and dispose of it that way. But there are items that individually they, somebody would, you know, it's worth what somebody will pay for it. And some of these things, if you saw them, you'd wonder why somebody wouldn't buy that old teacher desk. I don't know, the age of this, this equipment varies and we don't have a purpose to keep track of that. But I would say generally, most of these things are probably 25 to 35 or 40 years old.
Thank you.
Thank you Roger. Are there other questions, other discussion items? Okay. Then what we have on the agenda is we have obsolete equipment and obsolete items. We have a motion on the table to approve disposing of these items and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Apparently what I'm, apparently what I'm, is one motion, three, what I'm, two separate motions?
I pulled them as a single motion.
Okay.
I was going to vote as a single motion.
That's fine, then I'm just gonna vote against both of them.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have that? Next, we have our workshop topic. And to that, I'll turn to Dr. Wall.
We are very excited to get on with the workshop topic this evening and it gives me great pleasure to see these middle school teachers and middle school students and middle school principals looking at us. I have a very positive experience being a middle school teacher, so I'm very excited to have middle school students in the audience tonight. And board members, I think you're in for a treat to see what is going on in the middle schools as we took a year and a half to look at middle school program evaluation and now we're seeing the fruits of that labor because the students are going to show us and demonstrate some of the initiatives that the committee found that we, that recommended for best practice to be implemented in our three great middle schools. And tonight, we have the honor of experiencing some of these recommendations and how our students are experiencing that in the classrooms today. Amy?
Thanks Dr. Wall. And I would like to first start with turning it over to our three middle school principals, Mrs. Jay, Dr. Harmis and Mr. Crosby. They're gonna start us off and then we're gonna move down to the tables after they give us a little introduction.
Okay. Well, thank you guys so much for having us here tonight. We are very excited to share with you some of the great things that are going on across the district at the middle level. We have been very busy the last year and a half with the planning and then beginning the implementation process of our recommendations to you. As you can remember, we began this process in January of 2014 when we started with a research committee to take a look at what the research said about meeting the needs of young adolescents. We spent several months looking at that and just pouring into the details and specifics. And then we brought an additional group together to start talking about the planning and what that could look like at our level with our students in Carmel Clay Schools. Since we made our recommendations to you as a board, we have done several different things to plan for the implementation of our program, including training of all of our staff to help them prepare for teaching to a block schedule. And then also training that speaks to just the concept and development of young adolescents. So we spent a good deal of time working toward preparing in that way. In addition, we have trained all new staff that we've hired over the summer and into this fall in those two modules as well, just to get everyone on the same page with the same language about our programming. It was very important to us as we went through the research and development of our plan to make sure that we were aligning with the CCS strategic goals and focusing on a student-centered approach. Feel at the heart of what we did, we really looked at what young adolescents need and how we could meet those needs in a student-centered way. And as far as the objectives go with your, with our strategic goals as a district, we really feel that the plan we've put in place meets so many of those different objectives in different ways. In academic teaming, I know our students will be talking some about just the impact on academic teaming and how that can create a smaller community within our schools and help our staff and students get to know each other better in the time that they have with each other. Additionally, we really focused on block scheduling as a function of our day, not only to align with what the experience our students will have at Carmel High School, but also because it's grounded in so much best practice to meet academic needs of students. And so I'm excited to, that our students will be able to share how that shift has really impacted them as learners and our teachers to be able to share as well how that has impacted them as teachers of young adolescents. And then thirdly, the recommendation to have a flexible program model. We looked at, you know, traditional fixed schedules and then schedules that allowed us to be flexible. Working with young adolescents, we found that flexibility is critical. I know our students from Carmel Middle School will be talking to you about Core Plus. That's the flexibility component to what we're doing. And so I'm excited for them to speak to how we've set up Core Plus across the district to meet the individual needs of students. So that's just a quick review of the process. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Harmis and he'll talk to you a little bit more.
Good evening. Part of the strategic plan that you just saw a moment ago talks about real-world, hands-on experiences. And in the action plan under student learning, talks about project-based learning. And that's what the Creekside Crew over here is gonna talk to you this evening about. Current or future PBL that is going on at Creekside at this time includes English Language Arts, it's happening in science, technology and math. And tonight's example will be a seventh grade math unit. Teachers Katie Abel and Madison Schaefer are here tonight with students Melissa Sue, Zoe Edwards, Matty Kosk, Ethan Gold, Yumi Colombo, Chris Rofalco, sorry Chris, and Jenna Himmelstein to walk you through the PBL process and how it's being implemented in seventh grade math. Mr. Crosby? Oh, is it you? I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. You wanna hit it? Give your technology off.
And from Carmel Middle School, we'll be talking about the flexible block Core Plus and just all of the different things that that can be for our students and just for the functioning of our school. So I have Abby Richmond here with me, Max Humbert, Sophie Gates, and then Tammy Belbatowski, one of our English teachers at the school. They will be speaking specifically to how Core Plus has impacted their experience at the middle school. Couple things on our slide, as I mentioned, we did quite a bit of professional development into the spring and into the fall to help prepare for this block, this Core Plus block and all the things that that could look like. There's been lots of good collaboration across the district, within departments to talk about how are you, you know, formatting this to help students that need help in math or, you know, those types of things. And then we also spent some time educating our parents about the change with Core Plus being something new when you open your child's schedule to see that on there. So we have done some of that as well. Some of the things that we are doing just briefly in Core Plus, lots of good team building activities. We have found that that has been very good to help address the social, emotional needs of our students. And we've also been talking a lot about study skills. As we've transitioned into an AB schedule, a block schedule, there's a learning curve there for kids and for teachers as well. And so we have definitely spent some time in that process, hopefully to avoid then having to figure that all out when they get to the high school. So we've been working on that. And then lots of extension activities and enrichment, our students will speak to that as well. And then we've been working with individual students and groups of students to help prepare them to either reteach or pre-teach material to help them be more successful as they go into their core classes. And Mr. Crosby?
Thank you Dr. Wall and the board. Tonight, obviously I would like to recognize from Clay Middle School, Mr. Simon, Mrs. Falp, Luke Belcher, Aaron Fries, Jack Herter and Isabella White. I would like to thank them for being here tonight. And as you go through your session tonight, hopefully you will begin to, begin to see as they begin to talk about the impact of, of what teaming has done for our school. My session is basically, and our session is to kind of talk about the impact of the 90-minute block, how we've gone about planning it, how we've gone about organizing it, structuring it, to where our kids have a lot of experiences. Regarding probably real-world experiences, it's down at the bottom, but I think maybe I'll start four bullets down. In a recent article that I read from Education Week, it says, "Five Tips for Real-World Teaching and Learning." Number one, get students excited and involved. Number two, cultivate school and community connections. Number three, create authentic learning experiences for students. Number four, create meaningful opportunities for involvement. And number five, place process over product. And I guess after reading that, I thought about, you know, all the time that we, we focus on the content, part of it also comes with the skills that we're trying to, you know, teach kids and put kids in when it comes to preparing them for real-world experiences. So at the very top, if we skip up to the very top, obviously teaming and interdisciplinary, the time that our teachers have had this year to actually plan and organize lessons and that face-to-face communication that we were really sorely missing at the middle school level has really, I think, changed the game in terms of the, you know, the number one, you know, goal for the strategic plan that was up here earlier was maintain rigorous curriculum. And, and on top of that is digging a little bit deeper into that curriculum. And I think this year we've had an experience to do that. In a 90-minute block, our teachers have been able to come together, plan, be very intentional about that collaborative learning piece, and then what's that outcome look like when it comes to real-world experiences? The common planning time has been essential in doing that, the collaboration time has been essential. And then I think what you're gonna see tonight is that piece of, how do you take learning outside of the classroom and how do you bring the outside experiences into the classroom is hopefully what you will see throughout some of these, but I know at Clay Middle School, that's kind of what our focus was. So it gives me obviously great pleasure, I've seen some great things happening in classrooms this year with that extension of time. And most importantly, I've seen teachers talking and I've seen peer-on-peer interaction increased as well. And that impact of students learning from each other, you know, that's so important. So having said that, I think we move on to the next slide in the rotation.
Why don't you like us? All right, I apologize, I left my car. You had the car dealership, I'm sorry.
...
This is Sphero, and Sophie and I want to make this news. So, for our project, we're doing this with Sphero. So, for the tour of school, this is Sphero. So, this year, we can have the children find us at the central children's center. That's what I'm sure, so I'm not very sure.
That's a real problem.
So, what we do is there are some people at school that would use those. So, Sphero will drive, and we'll have to go both either on top of it or behind it. Plus, in that video, and we'll drive from some...
Many travel systems.
Oh, or is it just...
It's like a little...
Yeah.
So, that's where you say house the camera.
Yeah. But we're not sure that's going to work yet because we're still tracking the phone. And there's a... So, we might have to...
Oh, wait, so you have two years.
Yes.
So, you have something.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, when you have this time, you use it for study as well.
So, it's set up for our team. It's split up in three separate stages. So, we go to each stage for each class. So, for our first part, it's like SSR and something like that. We're like, I'm up to it, and so we watch the students. And we go to our second rotation, which is Sophie and I, who are supposed to be the other people who are the next round or teaching or teaching. So, we do that for a certain amount of time. Which for all three of us is good. So, we'll do more of our own rotations. Yes, for, like, just so you sign up for it. So, some kids are interested in some art. See, and then for the rest of the group, you sign up for that, like, the same as a day of school. You'll get them out of one of those groups to go and make a work. But the one rotation.
Ladies and gentlemen, finish your thought if you would, and then move table.
So, like, twice a week, there's two mentors. We have to use our Core Plus, so the kids don't, there's, yeah, or, yeah. So, like, it's having a third block of the day, it's four, and we have a fourth block the third, so you just fill those two. Like, our teachers have, like, where we are placing our baskets, so during the day, we can check and see where we are.
Yeah, well, thank you for coming on a Monday night to spend with us. Because I know myself, I wait the whole week, so I kind of run myself. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. I hope you miss the movements.
Yeah, I should too.
And then that one, well, what time, what is, and a lot of them, well, we don't know yet because we need to know. So, as a school, we're in the together, sort of the four areas that we're going back to. And I'm sure you address.
For private experiences today, so, um, everyone's, uh, with our makerspace, we have real estate. And then in future projects, we have our designers and designers. And then the teachers, so, of course, I had a discussion about the state, or, you know, did a lot of...
And then the modern ones, they're made for extension. So, like, we're starting to sell the houses. We share how the extension, you know, how your program has, you know, why they need to teach awards. But then there's lots of other things that have to do with education, after science itself. And you need to use that perspective always. Has been really hard to do for our teachers, but also for the days. And now, the last year, we're getting rich. And we're going to... But checking down, we're all...
For makerspace, Sophie and I, we're in, so what we're doing is we're using Sphero, a girlfriend. And we're gonna make a video of the school, and we have to do it in schools. And then, like, we can, we have to make a video, like, and we want to use it for tours for kids. And so, we're starting to attach to Sphero, starting to, at the, it's only in the nineties. And then, because we have a club, we have attached, so we just drop in and out. We drop all the teaching, and we're like, so, they'll just drop out this way, or they can be just like, say, on point.
My head was spinning already, you know, it was happening. Really fun.
Those guys, they're going to take you around, you know, the school.
So, it's been kind of fun, I guess, we can bring to it. But then, we can talk about, well, how can that impact our school? And we can sort of stuff, well, actually, we can, yeah, stuff with the point, but you want to talk about that a little?
So, generally, it's like, in the, you know, you're experiencing that for experience and that's, basically. You don't hear it happen, you're like, that again, you know, with that, and then you're like, little.
I think we're supporting this, you know. Yeah, that's like, and I know one's, yeah, for animal. We're all in for raising money toys for the kids, for, for all of them.
How are these, like, how can they do that? That, like, is so hard for this school. This is kind of neat, this is some of those student-led projects. In addition to, you know, work on leadership, that's a different thing. Just I need to kind of see some of the grassroots effort that's coming from the kids. Right now, your team's...
We also have... And different places around the world. And you're also, everyone is sitting down, they're watching, so just worry about getting them all out. And so, we're really trying to... So, came to them.
It's funny, because they put together all the announcements, they put together, you know, information, and I should send your hour to you. On the collection, and then they're looking at, what to do.
I just said, oh, because I have more time to understand.
To take those initial orders, and kind of come, come with them.
For classes, two or three times a week. You guys meet every day. Or, how is Core Plus structured? Do you have an opportunity to do all of these things?
So, what we have is, with our children, we have course by certain days. On, in our third block, it's set up into three different rotations. For our first one, it's our, like, study hall, SSR time, where we can go talk to teachers. And we watch our students, students. And after that, we have a sync rotation, which will be, like, the nature of pre-teach, pre-teach. They will add it to makerspace, so we do that for, I'm not really sure how long it's about, thirty minutes. And then we have our third rotation, which I'll be able to show you. So, we're supposed to do that with one of our races left. That's just the third one.
One minute.
And one, my question as well, is it all started at the beginning of the year? Was already kind of divided into just three rotations, and then they kind of can define more?
Yeah. It changed after the first quarter.
And you were talking, um, we sat in there, thinking if we had this 90-minute block, we could do all this, but we don't, you know, back in our, we don't need to. Through trial and error, we've seen some things, we haven't really liked this. We tried this, and so, our team changed.
We spray shop your last thoughts?
Rather than, than say, okay, what time we're going for this week?
Ladies and gentlemen...
Middle school.
Which ends in those, what, program evaluation, or, you know, if I wanted to do anything.
Is this thing tape and everything?
It might jump out and get you.
It's a spirit.
So, I'm talking about more plus over here. So, I just gave you, we're sort of organizer, that we put together from a little school, just to follow the guidelines in that time a little bit more. We started talking to parents about what is this thing, your child's skill of Core Plus? And what is happening in our sort of...
Yeah, so, that was a very broad, defining shirt of time. So, as we moved into the school, these are really good for, you know, this thing. It's a help, help with the, and then help us identify.
What I call one...
Some of our students, they have time for mediation, giving the extra support. This is what she was allowing us to do that, wherever that, you know, teachers. And also, we have, we start to try to, so they can, to say, for example, in math class, we're feeling struggled with a concept, you know, they can elect to go. That teacher can, we have that teacher, we can help her, and so, she can change her way. Abby mentioned that she was a great tutor during that time, so sometimes our students will volunteer to help, you know, every year as well, and that's, you know. So, we need a larger majority of our students to spend that time in Core Plus. That has been, for our teachers, you know, they have reports, and I, and we'll start to change to every generation, or whatever class that we do, but then there's the things that they're very excited about, that they'd like to extend, that they have made, and so, we can do a lot of this extension. And these guys are going to talk a little bit about some of their domain, enrichment activities, and just taking the, how we're to, the teachers running, and so, that's one of the, correct.
So, we're, we're in on the makerspace for our Core Plus, and we're using Sphero, and we're doing that. And there's, we're actually with this girl, and we're driving her to school, and we're getting that opportunity to school. And we're in the bedroom, and we're, you know, have lines on the stage, and we need to go there. So, we can give off every day for...
I was excited about that when you guys told me that idea, because we, in January, started transitioning up to grade. And I said, I think that would be really cool to use, to use the five years of our school, and something that they created, so maybe kind of coordinated with the kids about that.
Um, so, there, during the, the, and I'm usually out in, in math class. So, I'm helping, and I think it's really important that, they don't understand things. I kind of, I like to say that, we have that time, we teach, the teachers can teach, and sometimes I feel like, I don't know what I'm doing, and I feel like it's harmful to actually know what you're asking for. And then all three of us, we're just, are linked, and we, it's all about ideas. And I think, and, because I'm from a group, and if you have an idea that you can go, you can, we can, we'll talk to you. And, and, during Christmas, I need to get the gifts, and things that I finally, it's not, so, how? The going gift, since I know other people, and, we did, we do that, and, yeah. So, we have, and...
I would say, just getting to meet with the kids, when they have a project, they usually, they share the idea with me. We kind of talk about, you know, the specific, how can we make some of these, you know, things work, you know, within your actual team. This particular team initiated our candy collection, for I, that we're in the middle of, um, doing right now. But it's neat, because it's completely student-led. They come up with the idea, they pitch it, they talk about how they can incorporate them to the school, or, being my help, and even out of the traditional, you know, some of that, so these guys, I got that started. That's just working right now. And we've been to, I was a street model arrow, and I was talking about application. So, which, this last page, I was just, within the block, still have the opportunity to, to me. First rotation. So we're doing the old one. And we're the last ten minutes.
Well, they did a lot in their own. Which is the last year when they did a chance to read to the students.
It's been interesting. How has that been going? How are you using that? What was it? Yeah. And a lot of them have talked about how they appreciate it. That, you know, all of the teachers are over there. So like that first portion was, as I mentioned, where they're, you know, maybe, I really didn't really know. They're also able to move and go to some, you know, family. If they miss a class one day, they can check in with a teacher and kind of get home. If you didn't have that, like, to the block, and they're, they might not send it to you. To get some of that material. So I think that's been, I heard that over and over. I talked to kids last week. That was something they really appreciate. So it's true. Teachers really appreciate being able to check in with the kids.
So when the kids are in, you're in fourth class, then your teachers are, they're not.
They're, they all have a relationship. But the first occasion when you can go through to drink it out, like.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to.
Yes. The kids are doing like, oh, it's not fair.
But they're assigned, you know, sections, part of our teachers. And it's all within their team. So that the kids that they share.
Would you guys say something? One minute.
I really miss that. The Travis Stevens.
I do think, um. How do you know where it's ending? How do you know where it's ending? How does it feel this year at my student college compared to last year? Your eight years, you have two years. Pace the day.
Some titles are going to be a little, it's really long. So. Overall, I really like it. I like how, I especially like what's, but I like what it's all about. Period. So if you don't get it, so.
Okay, will you finish up your thought?
I'm going to do some stuff, but going forward, you have, like, you can warm up. And I go on my, and you do.
Spending your money.
And let maybe some of the two in hospital sheets on it. And get off the bench. And look at that a little bit. There's a lot that you really have, uh, more and more. Uh, how long do you, you know, it's a lot of it. And you just come with one other. And then.
Yeah. And I actually feel like. I really do. We're, we're making a hard one here in my, in here. I'm, I'm just, I'm. You don't, you don't have a fear of like, finish. Because like, you have a, have a problem. And then.
You guys are stressed. Stress? Did you say there's a last warm saying? Okay. Will you finish your thought?
There's less stress in the action. Trying to.
Stress, it depends on like, they kind of like, depends on. It's more stressful. Really like, I kind of get a little bit more stressed when you don't.
Great job representing the karma. Excellent. So we got volleyball represented and athletic forward. Pass. And you?
I just got one.
That's good. What activities do you have?
Uh, hockey tennis.
Are you close?
Thank you.
What's the skinny on this thing? What is?
Uh, well, I was gonna demonstrate.
This thing moves?
Yeah.
Get out of. I have to go like. You guys. It actually moves?
Yeah.
I don't care. Okay, I believe it. I come over and see it. Thank you. Great job. Way to go, like. Let's get a loss.
Obviously, you have experience to do like, first with Spiro. Cause a different one pops up as a product when you search. Yeah, I know, like that, like, I can't get it connected. Like, cause that's a different Spiro. Cause a different one pops up and it's like, just a first off. And this, I, it's.
I'd like to extend a huge thank you to all of our students and teachers and administrators that have joined us this evening. We are totally engaged and so excited and are, we are just tickled pink. We are so proud of you. Um, I'm going to open up the floor to questions for board members as well as administrators to all of you. So with that, comments.
I do have a question. First of all, I didn't appreciate till this evening how each aspect of the new programming worked together. And that was probably, um, probably one of the most exciting things is how one really plays off the other. And block schedule can utilize the core plus and et cetera, et cetera. What I'm wondering is, you know, kind of the next step. Are, are instructors at one middle school able, do they have time to talk to and share with instructors at another, at the next middle school? Um, where are you in that process as far as sharing what you're doing with this time? Anyone can answer.
I have shared, I have planned with, I teach honors round to the seventh grade level. And, um, I'm the only teacher that teaches that level at Creekside. And have met with the teacher at Clay that does and the teacher at Carmel that does it. And we kind of planned together and just what does honors out go look like for seventh grade in the block schedule? And kind of tweaking, um, have they done in the past? And it's been nice hearing their ideas and what's working for them and what's working for me and being able to share ideas.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate that.
Pam?
Yes, um, I was wondering how are the grades figured out for these students? Um, and with the teachers and the project based learning and, and how, which classes do they work into?
Everybody just gets A's.
It goes for your content they're doing. Will you introduce new science? Um, they'll get a math grade, a science grade. But the math grades in the math portion of the project does a high. They're very much beginning, they're telling what part of the math grades, what part is there. I'm like, well, you know, and it's kind of, but if it's just like the project does, and I think it's math, it's just. And we're based on child.
Okay, but they're also working in groups, correct? So how does the grade affect all of the students in the, within the group?
We have them in groups so that they can collaborate and their grades are different. So there are those groups and they're competing to go on things in friendship. And we call it, I mean, those, um, the, the, the kind of, does, you know, which works in their life. Um, that's the group part, but we try and encourage them to work together, but their grading is difficult. Grading some of their not being like standards. Or.
Madison, the final project itself, is that graded? Is there a presentation in this report?
No. We base our grade off like, our last time on our last day, we can make, decide all the information and come together and. But all, everything they know, I just don't like, this isn't the best option. Uh, I asked them that before they did their final presentation, not part of their final presentation, to mention that, but. Uh, because my math standard is not my student achievement standard, I don't include their presentation as part of their title. Um, that's kind of, it's the part that needs to flow from the beginning, but then a part that is most meaningful and their favorite part on the side. So that's almost like the presentation type of, kind of, award. A way to show off. And then. And we will also, we'll use a rubric for ours. Um, and when I'm talking about, you know, what, what about science this time? But we also teach them the collaboration skills, the group work skills, and the process skills. Especially, I mean, keep writing to, continue on the science and reward or optimization. And as part of their grade, they have a deliverable that's due every day, so they have an individual piece that they're turning in every day. And then the individual project will have a rubric. And they will actually self-reflect and evaluate their own project. So then they can use that piece if I want to, to be, that I, you know, that I respect for, they share my ideas. And they can grade their own job that they did during that project. And kind of combine the pieces.
Other, other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much for joining us this evening. Um, we hope you all get A's in all these classes that you're presenting to us.
Yeah. It's nothing.
Um, with that, I thank all of you for joining us and, and for bringing your students to our meeting to help educate the board and help enlighten us as, as to the new programming that we have at the middle school. Um, Dr. Wall, do you have anything you'd like to share?
I just want to reiterate everything that Leila said and the board have said. It's so exciting to see middle school back in Carmel Middle School, Creekside Middle School, and Clay Middle School. The concepts, the time, the social emotional opportunities for students to get to know each other and teachers to get to know the students again. It, it was really, um, exciting to be, see the work in the committee for a year and a half. But this is really, as I said earlier, the fruits of the labor, to see it in action and to hear the students, how they feel about it. I asked the groups how they feel. Um, generally, the consensus was the, the feel is good. And the pace is good. And the time for them to get enrichment or remediation, or time they need in core plus or just in the classroom to seek out that understanding and not be rushed. That's so exciting. And, and just to have interdisciplinary teaming back, which is all about student centered learning, which is the guiding principle. That the board has adopted as the number one guiding principle for this school corporation. To see that in action today is really affirming. So thank you to all. Parents, thanks for being here tonight. It's great to see you as well.
Thank you. And with that, meeting adjourned.